So, good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeanne Jenkins and is Chair of this board. I would like to call the special meeting to order. It is a public hearing. I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, Nancy White.
I'm Ed Woods.
Tom Haley.
Yes, I am Clark Adams.
I'm Jeanne Connor, and I would just like to say I have to leave at like 6:25. So if we're not finished, I apologize for having to leave on the early side.
All right, thank you. This is a hearing on a vicious dog complaint. We will follow Bennington's ordinance on the care and control of animals. This is an ordinance to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town of Bennington and others by regulating the keeping of pets. Mr. Maduro, a letter from the town manager, Stuart Hurd, was sent to you on December 17th stating that a complaint had been made regarding your dog. And I'm going to read relevant portions of this letter from the town manager. It says, "Dear Mr. Maduro, this is to notify you that I have received a vicious dog complaint regarding your dog. The Bennington Police Department and Animal Control Officer have indicated that your dog has bitten four different individuals in unprovoked attacks. Such actions are considered prohibited by the Bennington Care and Control of Animals Ordinance, Article 9. The ordinance provides that your dog may be impounded and that the town Select Board may hold a hearing to determine the level of the attack and, after findings, may order the dog to be restrained, controlled in some way, or be put down. I enclose a copy of the ordinance. The Select Board has determined that a hearing will be held on Monday, January 6th, at 5:30 at the Bennington Fire Facility to hear witnesses and reports of the enforcement officers. You may also testify or be called to testify by the board. You may have counsel should you choose." The Select Board members have all received a copy of the complaint letter dated December 17th, 2024. This is a quasi-judicial hearing and requires that everyone who thinks they may want to speak should sign up on the sign-in sheet. We will call the names of everyone that has signed up, and the town manager, Stuart Hurd, will administer the oath to everyone at the same time. Anyone who decides later on that they would like to speak will need to take the oath first. So first, we will, the first thing we will do is I will read the names of individuals who have indicated they would like to speak. They include Kimberly Krosick, Bridget Galant, Mike Brewster, Asher Maduro, Ashley Taber, Sarah, I'm sorry, Davendons?
Davendons.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to be added to this list right now? All right, then if all of, if, if one, two, three, four, five, six, these six folks would stand up, the town manager will administer the oath.
When I finish with this, just answer "I do" or "I will." I solemnly swear or affirm under the pains and penalties of perjury that the statements I make, testimony I give, and other evidence I submit to the Select Board at the Select Board's vicious pet hearing held on this date shall be true and correct to the best of my knowledge and belief. I will or I do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the order of actions this evening are, first, we will hear from the complainant, which is Kimberly Krosick, the Animal Control Officer. After speaking, Kimberly can invite witnesses to come up and share other evidence. The Select Board may ask questions. Next, we will hear from any witnesses for the complainant that have not been called, and the Select Board may also ask questions of those individuals. Following that, we will hear from the respondent, who is Mr. Maduro. If the respondent has witnesses or other evidence, they can share that perspective, and the Select Board can ask questions. Then, if there are others in the audience who wish to speak, they may do so. Following all the testimony, the Select Board will close the hearing, excuse the audience, and go into a deliberative session. Following the deliberative session, we will send a written decision to the parties. They will, and our intention would be for that to happen within a few days. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, the following rules apply. Parties can choose to be represented by legal counsel. Parties may provide competent and material evidence to support their position, including witnesses, photographs, reports. Parties may conduct cross-examination of witnesses, subject to the consent of the hearing board, which is this Select Board. We ask that all questions come through me, the Chair, rather than directly from one party to the other. Witnesses are sworn in, which you've done. Disorderly or disruptive persons will be asked to leave to ensure fair and orderly conduct of the hearing. A record of the hearing will be kept, and the complaining parties shall have the burden of proving by preponderance of the evidence that the pet is aggressive or vicious and should be subject to the restrictions pertaining to aggressive and vicious pets. After all evidence is taken, the Select Board will issue findings of fact, the level of the offense, and actions to be taken. Any party may choose to appeal the decision of the Select Board to the appropriate county court. So with that, I'll open this hearing, and I will ask that the complainant, Kimberly Krosick, please come forward, and you're welcome to sit at the table up here.
Hi, Sarah.
My name is Kimberly Krosick. I am a part-time Animal Control Officer for the Town of Bennington. I've started this position in July of 2019. I've received training at the Vermont Police Academy for Animal Investigation 1, Animal Investigation 2, and I've received animal control training through the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I'm here to provide you with information regarding Asher Maduro's dog, Zeus. The first incident I had pertaining to Mr. Maduro's dog was on Tuesday, October 20th, 2024, which was a report of his dog running loose on Main Streets. I made an attempt the next day, October 21st, to speak to Mr. Maduro about this incident. However, he did not answer the door when I knocked. I left my business card and mailed him a letter regarding the ordinance, provided him with a copy of the Town of Bennington Care and Control of Animals ordinance. The first bite incidents occurred on Thursday, October 22nd, 2024. I received an email from the Town Health Officer, Bridget Galant, regarding a bite involving Mr. Maduro's dog, Zeus. The email contained a letter sent to Mr. Maduro, as well as a bite report from SVMC Express Care. In the bite report, the property manager was bitten while attempting to unlock Mr. Maduro from inside his residence. I made an attempt to contact Mr. Maduro via telephone without success. I did leave him a message to contact me, and I never heard from him. The second bite occurred on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. I received an email from the Town Health Officer, Bridget Galant, regarding a dog bite involving Mr. Maduro's dog, Zeus. The email contained a letter sent to Mr. Maduro, as well as the bite report from SVMCER. In the bite report, an 11-year-old female was nipped while trying to pet Zeus and then bit the child's face after the child covered her mouth in fear. This was unprovoked. I went to Mr. Maduro's residence to speak to him about the dog bite, and made several attempts to knock on the door with no answer at the door. I left my business card at the door. I never received a phone call back from Mr. Maduro. On Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, I received an email from the Town of Bennington Health Officer, Bridget Galant, regarding a dog bite involving Mr. Maduro's dog, Zeus. The email contained a letter that was sent to Mr. Maduro, as well as the bite report from SVMCER. In the bite report, a 12-year-old boy was laying on the bed with Zeus, and when the boy moved his head, Zeus was, the child was bitten. This bite was also unprovoked. I went to Mr. Maduro's residence to speak to him about the dog bite. I made several knocks on the door with no answer. I again left my business card in the door. I never received a phone call from Mr. Maduro. After receiving the third bite report, I notified Chief Doucet of the third bite and my concerns regarding the dog. On Monday, November 11th, 2024, I received an email from the Town of Bennington Health Officer, Bridget Galant, regarding a dog bite involving Mr. Maduro's dog, Zeus. The email contained a letter sent to Mr. Maduro, as well as the bite report from SVMCER. In the bite report, a 14-year-old female was at Mr. Maduro's residence and sitting on the floor next to another dog. Zeus walked up to the child, and the child covered her head in fear of Zeus. Zeus then attacked the child. The child received six staples on her head. The pictures have been provided in this agenda. The mother of the child came to the police department and spoke to me, providing me with pictures of the child's head before and after the child received the staples. I went to the residence that day, I received the report, and Mr. Maduro did not answer the door. After receiving the fourth bite report, I notified Chief Doucet of the fourth dog bite and my concerns. On Wednesday, December 11th, I responded to Mr. Maduro's residence with two Bennington Police Department officers to see if Mr. Maduro would be willing to relinquish ownership of his dog, Zeus. Mr. Maduro would not relinquish ownership of the dog, and advised his dog is territorial, and that is why all of these bites occurred. Since August of 2024, there have been four bite incidents involving Mr. Maduro's dog, Zeus. Three of these dog bites involving children, all under the age of 15, and one incident where the child had to get staples. I feel at this time that Mr. Maduro is not taking the responsibility to correct his dog's behavior, and I'm concerned for the future incidents involving Mr. Maduro's dog.
How many animals reside in this, this home? Or is that germane to our questions here?
From my understanding, during the time, there were at least two to three dogs in the home.
And then Zeus is the only animal that's been involved in, in bites that you're aware of? There's no other history of the other animal being involved in the bites?
Correct. Each bite incident in the bite report states that Zeus was the aggressor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Any, I would ask, thank you, Kimberly. Are there any other witnesses for the complainant who would like to speak?
Could that be the one?
That, no, that, it could be, it could be. It could also be anyone else involved from the town. Should we move the microphone closer?
I'm Bridget Galant. I am the Town Health Officer for Bennington. I'm the one that has received the initial bite reports from the Express Care and from the emergency room. I have sent all four letters to Mr. Maduro. After the second incident, I had spoken to Mr. Maduro on the phone. He had expressed some concerns with the actions of Zeus. I advised Mr. Maduro with each letter that he's received that he is supposed to have the dog checked by his vet, and I urged him to have the dog checked. And as far as I know, after the fourth bite, I spoke to the vet, and the dog had not been seen. You know, it's just, it's sad.
Can I, can I ask about the quarant, the quarantine then? So we don't, what was the purpose of the quarantine if the dog has not been seen?
So, it's a rabies protocol. So after a person is bit by any animal, the dog, or the animal should be quarantined for 10 days to be supervised to make sure the dog is well, and it does not have rabies.
All right.
Hi, thank you for coming here. This quarantine, is that regardless of the animal's vaccination status?
Correct.
Regardless?
Even though that a dog has been vaccinated for rabies, it can still be exposed and would need a booster.
Okay, great, thank you.
And SVMC automatically notifies you when there are dog bites?
When there is any bite to a human, they have to report it to the Health Officer for the town.
I just have one question, Bridget. Do we know that the 10-day quarantine was adhered to each time?
We do not know.
Is there a process?
Animal, Animal Control would follow up, ensure that, I think.
Can I ask that of the Animal Control Officer?
That would be a Kim question.
Okay, yeah, so Kimberly can come back up in a, in a second.
Okay.
Sure, either one. Yes, please.
As far as I'm made aware, the dog did not, he wasn't in violation of the quarantine. So when he was advised of the 10-day quarantine, I had not seen the dog out, and I did not receive any reports of the dog being in violation of the quarantine.
Okay.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Any other questions of Bridget? All right, thank you. Are there any members that were involved in the dog bites on the complainant's side who would like to speak?
My daughter was the one that was bitten. I do have some photos. So from what was said before, my only concern is if the dog hasn't been brought to the vet, and we were only aware that I had gotten its original rabies shot. So, I mean, that's my only concern about, is my daughter had open wounds from this. So if the dog was around or whatever.
So are you, so are you asked, so it sounds like the dog has not been checked again to make sure that it does not need a booster?
So that's, I mean, that's what I was picking up on, that if it hasn't been seen by the vet.
Yeah.
I've kind of been in touch with some people, trying to get updates, so I know what to do with my daughter. I mean, I did keep her up on her doctors and all that, to keep it all checked, and it didn't get infected or anything. She was on an antibiotic and stuff for her, so I do have some photos.
We would be very.
Do you want me to bring them up?
Yes, please, yes. We would appreciate that. If you want, if you want, shall we just start with Eugene, and we'll pass them down?
Yeah, we have some of those.
All right, so they're pictures of staples in your daughter's head and? She got bit after they cleaned it up, hospital, that, during the staples, and then the scars. And there's one other photo in there that isn't of my daughter's head, but it's of a cat that he had fed to the dog as like a revenge thing towards his partner. We got sent that photo, so that's also in there. It was originally a video, but we just got the photo of the kitten.
That's not appropriate.
Please, I'm sorry, please, please do not interrupt. Okay. Okay.
And I only brought it up because it's a kitten that we previously had given to them before we found out that the dog was aggressive and attacked my daughter.
Okay. So it was your kitten?
It was originally our kitten. We gave it to them, they wanted it, before I knew that the dog was aggressive and bit my daughter.
Okay. Any questions of this witness?
What was your daughter's age at the time of the bite?
14.
Thank you. And also, your relationship to the Mr. Maduro?
I have no relationship to him. My daughter is related to his partner.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
And she also, there was, it was 10 staples, not six. I do have the hospital report that they wrote out too, if you want me to bring that up.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're, do we need to see that, or are we comfortable?
I'm comfortable with all of these.
Yep, okay, all right, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so we will return the photos back to you.
Okay.
We've all looked at them. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Yeah.
My name is Sarah. My daughter is Ashton. She's one of the victims of Asher's dog. She received stitches in her face. Her top part of her head had two puncture holes that were glued shut. I also have photos, but they're on my phone that you guys can see.
And I'm wondering, are the photos, are the photos that we have in here, are these of the staples, or are these of?
I think those are just the ones of after the doctors had cleaned.
I'm thinking from, from Kimberly, yeah.
Yeah, I brought them from the station.
Those are from the last bite, bite number four.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, thank you. I don't know how, is it, is it something that you can just, that you can show us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can also verify that Ashley's statement with the cat through several family members that my daughter, Shaylyn, her is Asher's partner, had stated to our family members that what had happened.
Thank you.
Oh, no, that's on your phone, okay. 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 And to you.
Are you ready to just, like, start recording?
Thank you.
Can you, sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a clarification on this picture?
They explained this is the kitten that was threatened.
Okay, thank you.
No? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak to this from the complainant's side? Yes.
My name is Mike Brewster. I work with the company Hale Resources, a property management company here in Bennington. And Azure Maduro lives at one of the properties that we manage. And there was one day, he sent us a message saying that there was an emergency that his bedroom door wouldn't open. So my colleague Lynn and I went to the residence to let ourselves in to try to open the door. While we were trying to figure out how to open the bedroom door, Azure had, I believe, climbed out of the bedroom window, came around the front, and entered the living room where we were, trying to open up the bedroom door. And as we were both looking at the door, trying to figure it out, that's when his dog, Zeus, bit my arm. And it'd broken the skin a little bit, so just to be safe, I wanted to go to Express Care, make sure I get it checked out, just to make sure, you know, everything seemed okay. And I believe that's when it was sent to the town, noticed, you know, notifying everyone that what had happened, so. Yeah, so that was, that was the incident.
Thank you. Any questions of this witness?
My, right? Yeah. My question is, like, did the Mr. Maduro, anyone attempt to restrain this dog before you entered in the area, or warn you that this dog is potentially vicious?
I, I had entered the unit just because, you know, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I heard, you know, there was an emergency, and, you know, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we could open the door, make sure everything was okay. So when I went in there, you know, Zeus was out, but nothing had happened at that moment. You know, I went to, like I said, I went to go troubleshoot, try to figure out how to open the, the door, and like I said, that's when I believe Azure had crawled out of the window, his bedroom window, came through the front door where we had entered to help look over what was going on. And then, as we were both looking at the door, that's when the dog bit my arm.
Were you, next to, giving sort of warning, when you were calling him over, the dog was there?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't believe so.
I'm, yeah, I guess I'm still trying to, so Mr. Maduro was in the same location as the, as Zeus while this attack happened?
Yeah, so at the same apartment, yeah.
Okay. The same room, is that, would that be true?
So, so when, when the bite happened, he was in the same room as me, in the living room, as, like I said, as we were trying to figure out how to open the bedroom door.
Okay. Was Mr. Maduro able to hold Zeus back?
Yeah, so after the bite had happened, you know, Mr. Maduro, Mr. Maduro pulled the dog away and put the dogs in the cage.
From your perspective, how was Zeus behaving after the bite?
Um, you know, a little, I think, upset. You know, I, you know, a little bit of growling, but at that point, once the dog was in the cage, I felt, you know, I felt like the situation was okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Yes.
When you first arrived, was there any indication that the dog was upset you were there?
Um, I, like I said, I just, you know, wasn't, I don't, I don't believe so.
He wasn't barking or growling or?
I, I can't, I can't remember, yeah.
Any other questions?
Does your organization have any sort of protocol about your residents who have animals at home, and your preemptive protection for employees, or when the owners are advised, or employees are advised to be aware?
I can tell I have a big mouth, but, so does your organization have any sort of a protocol where residents or tenants or even employees are notified that there is an animal in, in the home and being? or even employees are notified that there is an animal in, in the home and beware when you go in?
You know, it, it depends on the situation, sometimes that's brought up, sometimes, you know, you know, if, if ultimately if there is situations where we feel that, you know, there's, you know, a, a dog that might be overprotective in a situation, you know, we'll, we'll advise to make sure that the dog, you know, gets put away.
And best to your knowledge, Mr. Maduro or anyone else in that residence didn't give you any sort of warning or advisement that this, this dog might be a little territorial or aggressive or anything like that?
By, by the time that I had gone in there, you know, like I said, I was just responding, you know, because he said there was an emergency, so I just, you know, I wanted to just go in there and try to help.
Understood, I understand, thank you.
Yep.
Yes. So, I may need to call back the other folks who testified. In the other situations, in the situation where you were bitten, Mr. Maduro was present. Is that the case with the other three incidents? Was he present when the dog bit the other people, children?
Yes, for you.
Yes, for you?
Yes.
Yes, like, like physically in the same room? Okay.
Sorry, my daughter said he was in the bathroom, I'm sorry.
So he was not in the same room? Not in the same room, and then the fourth one, we don't know? Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions for this witness?
Yes, I have one. Yes, I know some property management companies have different policies on what they're able to release and what they're not. If you're not able to tell me, I totally understand. So I'm just wondering if you have received, if the property management company has received complaints from other lessees regarding Mr. Maduro or Zeus, and/or Zeus?
We try to protect, you know, just the, you know, the confidentiality of other residents at the property. So I think, I think at this time, I'll decline to answer that question.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak as a witness for the complainant? All right, all right, then we will move on to the respondent, Mr. Maduro. If you would like to speak to this issue, we'd be very happy to hear what you have to say.
All right. So, since we just ended with him, I want to speak on the situation that.
Can you speak into the mic?
I want to speak on the situat-, damn. I want to speak on the situation that he just mentioned. He said that he, he entered the home, we were both in the living room, it's not true. I was in the room still, and there's text messages and a witness to prove that he and Lynn asked, is your dog caged? I said, no, therefore that means do not enter the house, right? Yeah, he's, he's not allowed to, he's not allowed to enter the home unless the dog is caged. He said that. I said, the dog's not caged, he entered anyways. As I was entering from leaving my window, as he stated, I reached the living room. His hair was up and he went to pet the dog. The dog therefore bit him. That's a signal when a dog's hair is up. We all know that. So that's that situation. Then the other situation with my brother was sporadic. I was in the kitchen and I was doing dishes. He was in the living room and was breathing in the dog's face, apparently that's what he said, and then he got bit. I mean, if that's vicious to you, it's vicious to you.
Which one's your brother?
Cameron, his name is Cameron.
Okay.
And then the cat, I believe that she said, I fed the cat to the dog. That's, that's absolutely insane that you, that someone could ever accuse someone of feeding a cat to a dog over a relationship problem. I would never do that, so. I think people should just watch what they say, because you can really offend people. And I think that the situation with Carmen happened because she was sitting next to his pregnant dog, his pregnant mate. And I let the dog out the room because my partner told me that I should let the dog out the room because we had a cat in the room. So I let the dog out the room and I let go of him. And he went straight for Carmen, because Carmen was sitting next to the pregnant mate. I can't say that's why he bit her, I can't, he could have smelled other dogs or something else on her that he didn't like, but I have no control over what an animal's instincts do. I can only try to stop it. Yeah, so the first bite was Mike. That, I believe, was not my fault or the dog's fault, because you should not enter someone's home knowing that the dog is not caged. You should not pet a dog knowing that his hair is up. And you also shouldn't pet a dog without asking the owner. So I'm, I'm not obligated to say that he deserved that, and I'm not going to say that. Ashton got bit in the face. The, the real story that happened was he was underneath his table, the table that he always lays underneath. She went up to him underneath the table, the dog nipped at her, did not bite her. She walked away and then went back and went for his mouth to, to grab his mouth. And she got bit. Her sister also knows that story, so. But I'm just the defendant. I'm just the person speaking on what I saw. I mean, I have nothing to tell a lie about, this ain't scripted, this ain't written on a piece of paper or anything like that, so. If my dog gets taken and put in an impound, I mean, I, I believe I deserve to have my dog back and he deserves to live. But that's not up to me. He made the decision to bite people, so if he ends up getting put down, that's on him, right? That's not on me, because I can't control whether or not a dog takes off and runs. I can't control whether a dog bites a human. We all control our own actions in this world, we all have to take responsibility for our own actions. So if his responsibility is to die, that's pretty cruel. I mean, humans have made worse mistakes than didn't die, so. If we all believe in a higher world than this, he hears me, I'll see him again. You guys can do what you want, that's all I got to say.
Okay. I do think there were questions raised about whether the dog did, whether the dog was taken to the vet after each one of the bites and whether the dog was also quarantined. I think the families would be interested in knowing.
The dog was quarantined, never left the house, never, each and every time. I was on a 24/7 curfew because of the police department and my actions. So I wasn't allowed to take my dog to the vet. I wasn't allowed to drive either, didn't have a license at the time. So I wasn't capable of bringing my dog to the vet. The last time, and I did call her twice, I didn't call her all four times, but I did call twice. And I believe the lady who said this whole situation is just sad, I believe she also said I did call her about my dog and had some concerns. So I did call her. Not every time, I called her twice. The other thing is that he is updated on his vaccines, didn't need a booster. He has to get it every year, it's, it's a yearly shot, he's registered in time. And I think that's pretty much it, but I lost my train of thought on one thing, but it's cool.
Okay, all right, others have questions? Yes, Tom?
So you just said that you weren't allowed to leave your residence?
I wasn't.
So you were at home when the animal control officer knocked on your door?
Oh, thank you, that, that's what was on my train of thought. When she came this last time to ask me about the dog, I explained to her specifically each and every situation. She said, she stated that I only said that it was, what do you call it, territorial? No, I explained every single situation the same way I explained every situation to y'all. So, I, I mean, that's it, I have to write the remain silent too, so I don't have to speak on anything. Know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Do you have a muzzle for your, your animals?
I do, I got a muzzle after the last time. Yeah. I have a muzzle and I have a cage, a big cage that's.
You said after the last time, so after the fourth bite, you procured a muzzle? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. How old was that dog when these bites were occurring?
One year and five months, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Jane? Can you tell us what happened to the kitten?
What happened to the kitten?
What happened to the kitten?
The kitten, uh, okay, so the situation, there was a situation between me and my girlfriend. She was telling me she was breaking up with me, and that's my personal business.
What's happened to the kitten?
You're asking about the situation, I'm telling you the situation, okay? So I walked out of my house and I was breaking down, going through an emotional, whatever I was going through, right? And I was in my car, I walked back inside, my bedroom door I had left open. The, the cat was in the room, and I walked in and the cat was dead on my bed. I did not feed the cat to the dog, and I don't know who killed the cat. There was two dogs out the cage. So for someone to tell me that my dog did it, yeah, you can say that he bit all these other people, you can't say he, he ate the cat. You can assume that, you can presume that, but you can't, you cannot say that he killed the cat.
Can I ask, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't know who killed the cat.
Okay. You said, I believe, unless I misunderstood, that you don't feel that you're responsible for the behavior of your dog? So if you're not responsible for the behavior of your dog?
I feel that I'm responsible for my dog, and I feel that I'm responsible for taking precautions with my dog. Now, if my dog makes a mistake, or I make a mistake that my dog like, for instance, with Carmen, I let the dog out the room, I did not know he was going to go and bite her. He bit her, that's, that's his mistake. I could have had her, I could have had him on a leash. And to be honest, I told my girlfriend that we should leave him in the room or, or one of us should stay in the room with the dog. But we didn't agree on that, so I let the dog out the room and the dog bit her. And that's what happened. And then the situation with Ashton, I was in the kitchen. I was not in the bathroom, I was in the kitchen, I was cooking. And then, uh, the dog bit her underneath the table. And I took immediate action, I put him in the cage, and I brought her to the hospital with my girlfriend. The situation with my brother, I was in the kitchen, I was doing dishes, said that earlier. He got bit, I took immediate precaution, took my brother to the hospital.
So you feel like you, you were being responsible for your dog's actions?
I was.
Okay. Can I ask, has your dog had any training? Do you train your dog?
Do I train my dog, yes, I do. He's, he's very well-trained, actually. He made some mistakes, and I don't know why. I honestly don't, like, I can't tell you why he bit someone, I can't tell you why he did that.
Sure.
My question is corrective action going forward? I'm not hearing you talk about what might be different going forward to avoid repeats.
What might be different going forward if I can keep my dog?
Yep.
First of all, I would keep full precautions, nobody would be around my dog, strangers, people that I don't know should not be in my house and around my dog. And if someone is coming to my house, that dog is to be in the cage. If he's going in the public, he's to be on a muzzle. Constant checkups at the vets, his shots are need to be up to date, and love and affection.
My only response to that is that it sounds like you know the people that the incidents occurred with. So it wasn't about strangers in your house, it was about people?
No, I don't know them, I don't know them.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood, okay, thank you.
They, they are, they are my girlfriend's family. I don't know him, Mike, he's just some guy that comes to the house to check on things. We've never had a solid relationship, it's just been, he comes in and checks my house out more than everyone else's apartments. That's, that's, I mean, personal, I guess. And that situation was just absurd, he shouldn't have been in the house without me. He came in when I told him the dog's not leashed. I, I was getting out the window, I mean.
Thank you.
All right.
We all know that dogs are protective over their home, you don't just.
Please, please, please.
So, yeah. How many pets of yours or of anyone else's do you currently have in your residence? And what type?
Should I respond to that? He threatened to kill my dog.
No, you should respond to Sarah's question. Please, 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 please.
Oh, he just threatened me.
Please, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna. So, we need to, we need to remain civil or you will be asked to leave, so. And right now, what we are, right now, the respondent?
Yes, my question was, how many pets, animals of yours or anyone else's?
Right now, I have four.
What type?
I have a German Shepherd, Golden Retriever. I have a King Corso, Rottweiler Pit Bull. I have a Pit Bull Lab, Pit Bull Lab Boxer and Pit Bull Lab Boxer, King Corso, oh, and King, American Bully.
Okay, so the, I love, I love Lab, so, so it's a Pit Bull Lab mix, is that?
Yep.
Okay, okay, yes.
And I just got this, this one, this is Golden Retriever.
Okay. And the ages of those?
Seven weeks, one year. And King is a year and is born April, April something, can't remember exactly.
Okay, do you currently have any cats in your household?
No.
No, okay. And the dogs at the mo-, how do they interact? It seems like one seems, seems like biting a lot, right? We're not going to hide that, does, do they bite each other?
They all interact well.
They interact well?
Yep.
Okay. And also, my second question is, do you have children in your residence under the age of eight, 15? Or any other people in your residence?
Not besides my girlfriend.
Okay, and to, you know, how, how are you feeling about interacting with Zeus? Have you received any bites, any nips?
No.
And how do you prevent that from happening to yourself?
To myself?
Yes.
I mean, he's, he's my dog, he's, he's protective of me, he's never gonna, he would never switch up on me.
And your partner?
Never.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Are there, are there any training procedures for all these dogs that are in your house? In your apartment?
Excuse me?
I'm asking what training procedures are occurring with the other dogs, which I am concerned that if you have one dog that has been aggressive, maybe you have other dogs that will be aggressive.
No.
What kind of training are you doing with the dogs?
I mean, like, what do you mean by training? I'm not a, I'm not a ESA trainer, I'm not a, I walk my dogs, take them outside, let them use the bathroom, bring them in, feed them, take them outside. take them outside, feed them again later in the day and give them attention.
Okay.
It's a, it's an at-home pet, not a canine for the police department.
Okay. Other questions? All right, uh, thank you.
Oh, you have another question?
So, this is more, what are your...
Go ahead, Sarah.
Can I deal with the criminal threatening after? I just wanna make sure.
Uh, there is a police officer here, okay.
And it was heard by everyone in this room, so...
Please, stay on topic, okay?
I lose my train of thought quickly, so just let me gather this. You mentioned you have four dogs in your household, and they seem like rather large breeds. Uh, in my household, I I know I could not have four large breeds in my household. It's pretty small. So how do you, how do you make that work?
How do I make it work?
Yeah.
Give them the time of day and patience and be responsible. I mean, it's not hard. How many kids do you have?
I don't have any.
Oh, well, if you had four kids...
I wouldn't have space for that either.
You have to give them the same attention, love and affection. They have a heartbeat too and feelings. Dogs have probably more feeling than us.
Yeah, I I wouldn't have space for either. I just wondered how you were, made that work with space. Dogs are pretty big, right?
With space?
Yeah.
Uh, well, there's a living room, bedroom, kitchen, so they move around at their own rate, I mean...
See, other question, how do they get their energy out?
Outside.
Okay.
They go outside.
And how, how do you make that work with your limitations?
I don't have any limitations.
Okay. Um, you did mention you weren't able to leave that often, correct?
Yeah.
So how, how are they able to get enough energy out?
Oh, I have, I have a front yard, other, I have another yard, and they go outside.
Okay. An estimate, how much time do you think they get outside a day?
As much time as they need.
Okay, thank you.
Are those fenced yards?
Excuse me?
Are those fenced yards?
No, they're leash dogs.
Okay. Clark, I'm sorry.
No, not a problem, not a problem. Uh, I think you touched briefly on it with Sarah's question. So you have three-room home? Is that what I heard you say?
One, one.
Beg your pardon?
One bedroom.
What, I mean, the whole total, living room, dining room, kitchen, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
So that's three rooms?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, four, four fairly substantial animals.
Yeah, I mean, the King Corso Rottweiler Pit, she's small. She's not, she's not as big as she's supposed to be. She's small. As you can see, she's not very large either. She's pregnant right now. The German Shepherd's a puppy. She's gonna grow up and have everything she needs. And then we have, uh, the American Bully, so...
So Zeus, the offending animal, uh, would you say he's the the dominant animal amongst your group?
The dominant animal? Yeah. Well, I'd say he's the the strongest. I mean, if we're speaking dominant, if you're the father of a family, you're the protector, right? So, yeah.
Again, I...
I'd definitely say he's the dominant one.
I'm just thinking amongst animals, if you have a dominant animal who feels his domain needs to be protected, so to speak, would you say that might apply to Zeus?
Like, who's gonna protect the domain?
No, the the dog, this is his domain amongst the other animals there and even humans.
It's all of their domain.
Hmm? But I mean, that's, I'm just wondering if Zeus is the dominant one. I'm trying to sort out what, out of all the animals you have, why this particular animal is involved in so many bites? That's what I'm trying to sort out, is it just that this, you perceive, or this animal perceives as the dominant animal and protector of what goes on in your, your home?
He was the first, first dog.
I mean, I I said it. I said it. He's, he made, he made a mistake. I, and in all reality, from your perception of the world and of, and your perception of this situation, I'm irresponsible, okay? So I'll take responsibility for my irresponsible actions, right? Because I'm the one who let him do that. If I'm the parent of a, of a kid and I let my kid go to school and he ends up beating somebody up for no reason, I'm responsible, even for his actions when I didn't make him do it.
Well, I I don't think, maybe I missed it. I haven't heard anybody...
That's what you're trying to get out of him.
No, 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 sir. I'm just asking in terms of, trying to sort out why this animal is biting people. You know, you have a large group of animals.
I can't tell you. I can't tell you why he's biting people. He's vaccinated. Uh, he he gets love and affection and he's, he's a good dog. Now, certain circumstances, you're sitting next to a pregnant animal that he impregnated and you're covering your head, looking, you're, you're in fear. When you're in fear of a dog, especially an American Bully, you might get bit. When you walk into a home that's not yours and you were told not to enter, you might get bit.
So I'm, I'm, my concern is, six months from now, we will be back here in his room hearing about multiple bites from this animal again. And from what you're describing to me, I, I don't, I don't know. I'm looking, I'm gonna go by the track record, my...
They wouldn't come, they wouldn't enter my home.
Well, again, that's one of my concerns is, your, your animal, you said he's out on leashes. It's my observation, children, people walking, crossing lawns all the time. That's my concern, six months from now.
I've had him, I've had him out, I've had him outside, people have pet him. Before, 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 uh, I went on my 24/7 curfew and all that stuff and I wasn't allowed out the house, he's also an ESA animal. And he's an emotional support animal, right? And I used to bring him to every store that I went to, Walmarts, Petco's, Price Shoppers, Anferds, whatever you wanna say. The mall, for Christ's sake, the mall is loaded with people. Never bit anyone. Everyone comes up to him, let me pet him. I let her, I let him pet him. Soon as I got put on lockdown, my dog couldn't go in the public anymore because I was the only one taking care of him. He became antisocial. I believe that has something to do with it. But I'm not a doctor. I can't diagnose this dog.
Yeah, my, my concern is the sub, safety of the people of Bennington. And I'm concerned with this track record and still trying to sort out in my own head why this animal is like this and and what we need to do to lessen the threat to the public that this animal apparently poses. And I'm hoping maybe you could enlighten me, but thank you.
All right, any other, any other questions?
One follow-up to, excuse you, what Clark mentioned. You said, um, people won't be entering your home again? So is that...
Strangers.
Strangers, okay.
Strangers.
And what do you mean by that?
Uh, people that I'm not acquainted with. People I've, they're not my friends, they're not my family, they're not people that are, like, that aren't smells on me. You gotta, these dogs smell other humans, like, on you. And people that are not my friends or I'm not acquainted with will not enter my home.
And how, that the people have already received their bites?
The only one that's my family that was in my home was my brother. And he was in my home because he got dropped off by my mother, who was in Florida, uh, because I was gonna be taking custody of him. He got dropped off. I shouldn't even have to explain myself, you're pressuring me, but I will say it anyways. He got dropped off and, uh, he was only with me for about a week. So he was new to the, um, house. He is my family and I would let him in my house again. He came into the house after he got bit and didn't get bit again. And he was around the dog. So if that says something, I don't know. He ca- he was around my brother after being bit, though, by him, by, uh, Zeus. He was bit.
All right, thank you.
Came back, nothing happened.
All right. Uh, any other questions? Or can we ask Mr. Maduro if there are any witnesses that he wants to call? And, um, uh, otherwise, I think we're...
I wanna call the witness.
All right. Uh, has that witness been sworn in?
Yeah, we all were sworn in in this room.
Okay. This morning? Okay.
In this room.
In this room, sorry. Okay. Uh, who are you calling?
Shaylyn Bentley.
I didn't swear.
You did not get sworn in?
I didn't swear.
Okay. Yes. Uh, then please stand up, uh, spell your name, though, first.
S H E A L Y N N Bentley E Y.
Thank you.
You will answer, I will, or I do. I solemnly swear, I am in the name of the state of Texas, that the statements I made, testimony I give, and other evidence I submit to the select board at this select board's position of fact, held on this date shall be true and correct, to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I will.
All right. So, Mr. Maduro, you can step down. Oh, can you leash that dog, please?
Leash the dog.
Thank you. Uh, can you leash that dog, please?
Yeah, he's taken leash off. Come here.
Leash that dog?
This dog? The one wandering around?
My name is Princess. Show us a name. Princess.
Thank you. Thank you.
We, we just have a lease law in Pennington.
No, I'm not talking about the lease.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Uh, what am I saying?
Uh, you were called up here as a witness, so, um, anything you would, you think is relevant to share would be helpful.
Um, so for Cameron, my boyfriend was in the kitchen. I walked into Cameron's scream and he said he was blowing in King's face, but not like blown, like, you know what I mean? Like, he was all, and King ended up biting him.
Dad, take her.
And then we immediately brought him to the hospital. As to my sister Ashton, I was working. I did leave work to bring her to the hospital. My little sister said that she went under the table that my dog was under and I guess he nipped at her and she went to go cover his mouth and that's when he bit her. And Asher came, I, I ran from work, I got her. She went to hospital, I called my mom and dad. Um, he's been good with, he was good with my sister way before that. He was amazing with her. As to Carmen, he was okay with her too at first. And then I think from the cat and being like, when we, we said we went in the room with the dog and he seen the cat, it wowed him up. And for some reason, he did not like the cat. We were planning on getting rid of the cat. Um, and it turned into, we said, get out of the room, and he went straight for her, 'cause she was sitting by the cage next to our, um, my pregnant dog and my other dog. And he took that as, you know, probably like, who's this? You know, he wasn't around her much. And for Mike, um, we were locked in our bedroom and they text Asher saying, is Zeus caged? And Asher said, no. Asher, we, literally, we pulled our AC out of the window as fast as we could and Asher jumped out, but by the time he got in, um, King already, well, by the time Asher got in, 'cause I came in after, King already got him in the arm. Um, I met Zeus when he was about one years and he was perfect with me and my sisters, like I said. And he was perfect with everybody. He was really nice. And with him being locked up, like I said, too, it could be that. I mean, I work all the time, so I don't know what happened either. He just...
All right. Do you have anything that you, um, would like to add that helps us understand better what is going on?
I think that if we're able to keep him, I'm gonna pay for training classes to see if that could help because he's done an amazing job at training him, but with me working so much and having other dogs as well, it's just really hard, so...
Questions with this witness?
I just have one question for clarity. You just said that, that by the time you got into the house, King had bitten the dog?
Uh, King bit the guy, I meant. I'm sorry.
King bit the guy, but we have a record that Zeus bit the guy, so now I'm confused.
Oh, we call, okay, we call him King, but his real name is Zeus. Sorry.
Is that choking herself? Come here. Other questions?
Um, yes. Uh, again, so this is Prince- Princess?
Yes.
Yes, so, see, she's pregnant, right?
Yes.
And so you've got four dogs already. What are you, what are you gonna do with the rest of the dogs? That's quite a few dogs.
Well, we're moving soon and I'm going to get rid of them, all of them, but, you know, I don't know. It just kinda happened. I didn't want it to, but it happened. I couldn't control it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure. You said you're moving soon. Moving within town or you're leaving the town of Bennington?
Oh, no, we're staying in town.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other witnesses further responded? All right.
Excuse me. I just wanna clarify one thing. Uh, with Mike from the landlord?
Yep. Mike, do you wanna come back?
Yeah, come on.
Mr. Brewster, you wanna come back up?
The respondent and his significant other both said that there was some sort of text message or communication prior to you entering the home that the animal was, was not caged? Is that correct?
So now, um, what had happened, when I got to the property, when Asra said there was an emergency that the door wouldn't open, um, I had, I had knocked and then, uh, just because, you know, he had stated that there was an emergency, um, I had let myself in. But, um, my colleague Lynn, who was there, was also messaging. And by the time, um, that I was in the unit, they were, you know, they were having these messages.
Okay. So your colleague may have, in fact, received some sort of warning that the animal was loose and not caged, but you, you were not in that loop?
You... Yeah, so I, so I had, like I said, yeah, so they were, they were messaging. And then I had, um, like, you know, like I stated, just because, you know, he said that he couldn't open the door and just wanted to make sure, uh, to go in there and try to help him out, um, I had gone into the unit, yeah.
Well, okay, so I just wanna make sure that you had not, in fact, been given some sort of warning. I, I get the impression from what those folks said that a warning had been issued to the workers. So your associate may have received the warning, but you did not.
Yeah, so, like, we were kind of in the process of figuring it out as the, then the door, like I said, I had entered the doorway and then we were, you know, receiving this message. And then, um, you know, once already in the unit, I, you know, decided to make the decision to try to open the door.
So it sounds like the timing was such that the texting was happening at the same time that you were already in the unit?
Trying, trying to, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, that's why I wanted to make sure that, you know, in fact, you were not aware of this warning, not to enter the unit 'cause the animal was loose, that, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
All right, thanks, 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 Mike.
Yep.
Thank you.
And one, one more brief, um, and the call for the request was elevated to an emergency, that's correct? What, from what I'm reading, is that correct?
Just, yeah, that's what he had said, so, in the text message.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak before we close this hearing? And if you haven't been sworn in, we can swear you in. Yes, you've, yes, please, come on up. Just state your name again, please.
My name is Sarah, Ashton's mom. Ashton wanted me to clarify what had happened that day. They were cleaning the apartment, Ashton had spent the night previously with her sisters. And she did kneel down to pet the dog and she did not cover his mouth. As soon as she went to go put her hand over his head again to pet him, the dog attacked her and bit her in the face. Asher did act fast and got the dog off of my daughter and I'm very thankful of that and rushed her to the hospital, but she didn't try to cover his mouth. She had been around that dog all day long and didn't provoke that dog at all.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else would like to, uh, share any relevant information? All right. Hearing no further, um, questions or desire to speak, um, I would like a motion for this board to go into deliberative session. We will not be making a decision, we will not be making a statement coming out. So, uh, after we make the motion and vote on that, then we will wish you all a good night and thank you very, very much for, uh, coming and, um, sharing your information with us. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, we go on to deliver a session.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. All right, thank you all very, very much.